Miss Gates, will you call the roll please?
Becky Gah.
Here.
Pat Jones.
Here.
Ron Mackey.
Yeah, here.
Paul Sedmak.
Yes.
Diana Spencer is absent. Judy Carpe Longo is absent. Bill Ryan.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Okay. I ask the commission here to excuse the two that are absent. Judy is still on vacation and Diana was unable to make it because of her work.
Oh, move them. Excuse them.
Seconded by Miss Gah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have that out of the way. On the whole business.
We're about minutes.
Yeah, we want to approve the March 12th regular minutes of 2013. Uh, Pat Jones.
Okay.
And seconded by Mr. Ryan. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we don't have any issues with that. Okay. Uh, BNC Machine. A little background, I just thought I'd put a machine shop over there in the area where we had created an industrial, partly an industrial park. Been here for a few years and now he wants to expand. And I just applaud that move. Me and Miss Gates went out there to check to make sure he had enough setback and enough room to go ahead and do that. And he is, he is in compliance with our city ordinances and he has given us a, a little bit of a site plan here and he could come with the bigger ones once he decides to put the building up. But as far as I can see, he's in compliance, there's no issues. And that's why I put him here first in front of the church here because he should be able to dispose of this real quick. I don't think, if anybody has any questions about this, feel free to say something. He has plenty of room in the back. He wants to put a 75 by 80 foot expansion onto that, which also means jobs for this community and I certainly recommend that. Besides that, I, I don't see an issue. He has plenty of ingress and egress and parking.
Yep.
He has plenty of parking. We went over and looked at it.
Sounds good.
He complies. So if there are no questions, somebody would make a motion to approve this?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve B.C. Machining Incorporated. The application to a right.
Seconded by Mr. Sedmak. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. You're done.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Geez, you didn't tell us anything. Take care.
Now you're spending some money.
Yeah. Okay, our next item of business is the New Leaf, United Methodist Church. And we may have someone want to speak on that. Would you?
I'm actually just going to introduce the speaker.
Yes.
We have Todd Nagy here from Hirschman Architecture.
Okay.
And he'll, he'll be presenting our project. It is what has become of the idea that we presented to this body approximately two years ago. It's finally come to some fruition.
It's been a little over a year, but it's, uh, I think it was before you were the pastor, wasn't it?
No.
No, um.
Yep. Well, in any event.
In any event.
In any event, we, we welcome the project any. The only issues we have is that you not landlocked the rest of that property back there. And there are two people that own property behind it. And that we would not be in favor of if you landlocked it. So if there's a drive that goes back there that they have access to their property, I don't see a problem. And you can go ahead and explain your.
Do you want me to address that now or do you want to? Well, I can say just in simple layman's terms.
Okay, that's what we want.
There's no drive going back there that we, there is a service road that goes back to the Brian tanks that are owned by Barnett Energy Company. There's five different wells, two on the south side of Gateway Drive and three on the north side. None of them those wells are on our properties. When he put together his leases and put all his stuff together, he did not secure any of the parcel or plots that we own, even though he put a road on one of those parcels and stretched his piping over it and his hookup to use to have Dominion Gas. And we explained that to him before we purchased the property and he didn't want to come to an agreement then. But once we purchased the property, he very quickly acquiesced and said we can come up with whatever agreement we wanted because we had the legal wherewithal to ask him to please remove it. Of course, we have not done that. We're not trying to stop, you know, folks from doing what they want to do. We just needed to be able to use the property that we had purchased.
Well, granted, and I, I think the commission wholeheartedly supports your venture, but don't want them people landlocked back there. And there's got to be some kind of a drive that gives them access to their property because you can't access off Route 7. That's not accessible and that's state controlled. So it has to be off Gateway somewhere. Now, you got a drive that goes back to that, that building that's already there that you, I think you're using too, right? It used to be the medical building there?
Yes, sir.
There's a drive that goes back to that.
Um, you mean along the, uh, along Route 7?
Goes from Gateway all the way.
No, off Gateway.
It goes, comes off Gateway Avenue and goes all the way down to that.
Okay, yeah, there's a double drive that's paved and lit.
Yeah.
That leads onto the property.
Yeah.
That sounds like a good path.
No, if that is, see, if you want to close that off, then see, we're not going to be in favor of this because you're going to block.
That's going to be our main entrance and egress.
That's, that's fine. I don't want to be able to, it's fine as an entrance and egress, egress is what we need, but what we need also is not to block or deprive the landlocked that the other parties that own property behind you.
There are, um, the party that sold us that 10 acre lot that has the road that goes back to the Brian tanks also owns additional property that's along the frontage, along Gateway that leads back to his other properties.
Well, here's, here's the thing. You know, that was our issue when you first brought this to us. This was brought up before, that as long as we're not landlocking the rest of the land back there, that we were wholeheartedly in support of this. Now, if you're going to landlock, I'm not in favor of it. I don't know what the rest of you. I'm not in favor of it at all. So you can't landlock them people back there. That would be, that would be just like me wanting to landlock you. You're going to build a church back there and these people in front are going to build all the way across and you can't get to them. Not good. So I don't think that's an issue, that's a, that's a strong issue there. That's, I think, when you get done explaining, I think that would be the only issue we have.
Well then, I'm going to say one more thing and then turn it over.
Okay.
But the reason I bring up the dealings we've had with Barnett Energy is because I wanted you to show the complacency that the church has with the whole idea of not blocking people from their property or their livelihood. So while we had the right, we also, we were clear from the beginning, we weren't going to exercise that right because we do, we're going to stay in line with this whole idea of keeping people with the ability to get back in there. But there's also other avenues is what I'm saying. There is ingress to those properties from the name of the road, which school's that?
Norman Road.
There is access from Norman as well as the Talarico property directly to the.
If they, if there are access to them people, I have no issue with that.
Okay, I just want you to be aware of it.
Okay, but somebody has to show me that and, and as you go on with your plans and your site plans and stuff and you start to work, that stuff all has to come up.
Okay.
So I, I just want to make it clear before we start.
Sure.
And before you explain your product, what our main issue is here. And I, I will wholeheartedly welcome the church to go ahead and build a new building. That's great for the city of Connie.
I have a question on.
Yeah.
When you say access to the property, what are you asking us to get?
What do, what am I asking you?
Right. Are you asking us to give them a road, a 60 foot road?
No, 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 no.
That's what I'm trying to get some clarification with.
No, we went, you know, you, you got a drive back to that other, that other building back there and that hits, and that goes back to their, their property. There's two people back there that own property back there.
Right, and a drive to access is, is all doable, but it's, who gives it? Does, is it the Talarico? Is it the church?
Well, I'm not telling you, I'm not telling you you have to maintain a roadway. What I'm telling you is you have to make, give them access. You know, if it's a lane, whatever it is, it has to be, they have to be able to get back to their property.
Okay.
I don't want you to put no trespassing signs up there and they can't go back to their property.
We just need to be clear on what kind of access you want.
Well, you know, you've had, you've got a drive back there right now. That's not a 60 foot wide drive.
No.
No, it's about a, what, 20 foot, 25? Yeah, that's fine. As long, as long as these people can get back there and they're not landlocking these people, I have a problem. And I wouldn't want, I would do the same for you. I would not want you landlocked if you were in that position. So that's one of our functions here as a planning commission.
Sure.
We can't, we can't go ahead and let that happen. Okay?
Okay. I'll take it from there. Okay. All right. I'm not sure if everybody has any site plans, but I ran out some extras so we can have something small in here in front of you while I discuss it on the larger ones. Okay. Yeah, I got that. This is much better than.
Yeah, I got bigger parts.
Like Pastor Scott said, my name's Todd Nagy. I'm with Hirschman Architects and I'm here on behalf of New Leaf Church to present to you this preliminary submission for this. This is purely, my intent here is to introduce this project to you. Now, we're in now the design development phases where we're, we got the project pretty much nailed down and we're in the process of generating all the civil and site work for this, but it's more of a introduction of what's going to happen here. You guys have been aware of this project for some time now, so it's nice to kind of see where we're going with this. Like Pastor Scott said, you know, the drawing you have in front of you is a twofold thing. On the right of this is the overall site plan. This is where we're talking about the issues with the adjacent properties and the access to it. This entire area that we have indicated is the parcel that New Leaf owns. We've indicated on here is that service drive to the gas grill where Brian Tank's dead is being maintained. And along the north side of this property is, is the, the items in question when we're talking about an agreement for access. If no other access to the east is, you know.
Well, let me ask you something, sir. Where is Gateway Avenue there?
Gateway right now, this is your Gateway Avenue right here.
Okay.
Route 7.
What's your orientation on this? This is looking west then?
To the right of you is north.
Yeah, yeah, that's west. The top is west.
Right, west, north, east, southeast direction.
Okay.
This is Gateway Avenue right here.
All right.
That takes us back down.
All right, and this is the existing road going in there. So this thing is going to be on two sides of the road then?
No, no.
Two sides of Gateway?
No. This is Gateway here. Everything is to the north of Gateway. Nothing's coming across the street.
And what do you, what do you have?
This is, this is an enlargement.
Oh.
Because it, at this scale, it's kind of hard. No, 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 I'm sorry. Let me clarify. The left, the right side is the overall showing the entire parcel and then we blew this up more so we can clearly.
You scared me though. That's a blow up of this.
Yes, sir. It's a blow up of that, of that side, just so you can see things a little bit better. It's just squinting. I know I can't even see that small, but what we're trying to show you is how the parcel lays out of what is actually owned by New Leaf, the access drives to the things that will be maintained. Because as you can see here now, this proposal is, they're still hugging the very west end of this project. Even though they own all this parcel down to the bottom, they're still maintaining the development up in this northwest quadrant of the property.
Where is that, where's the medical building now? Where's the medical building now?
Currently, right here is the existing medical building.
Okay.
We have three phases to this project that we'll propose. We're going to show you the whole picture and obviously this will come in phases as the church's funding was developed. So what we're going to show you, let's, let's look at the larger ones, it's easier to see. Right now, currently, we have a 6,700 square foot existing building that the church owns.
Right.
And basically what phase one is going to be is right now, they're going to take the existing building and do some modifications to the inside of it. Primarily now, Pastor Scott, correct me if I'm wrong.
I will.
Around the, the existing use inside of it now is they're using a lot of the perimeter rooms as offices and meeting rooms.
Yep.
Where we currently are going to take a portion of the north side of this building and retro it to accommodate all the restroom facilities for this sprung complex. So we're going to be putting all the restrooms inside of this facility. Now.
This would be another phase.
Which, excuse me?
This would be another phase later.
This is, no, this is part of, this building and this giant elliptical is, is phase one right now.
Okay, that's going to be done.
Correct.
Okay, you're talking about.
So they got the existing building and their proposal is they want to build this 13,000 square foot sprung structure, which is a tensile fabric looking structure. I have some pictures I can show you here.
Sort of like an auditorium?
Yes, and it's basically, it's going to house the sanctuary and gathering space for the church.
Okay.
So all the large assembly activities are happening within this structure and the secondary uses, the restrooms, offices, meeting places are happening within the existing building.
Existing building, okay.
This is what we're going to modify. Because all the, all the mechanical electrical systems are all in this building anyway, so it's easier to modify this instead of trying to introduce it within this structure. And after I show you some of these interior renderings we have done, it will give you a better feel of what we're doing here. So phase one of this project is to finish modifying the building, erect this, this, the sanctuary structure. And also to the lower portion of this, we already have existing parking available, which is part of this March drive we were discussing earlier.
Right, I've been out there. I know, I don't want you looking at there.
Also within this phase is, is to add another bank of parking because obviously we're looking at, we're increasing the occupant factor of the structure when we bring people in here. So phase one is to add an additional hundred and some parking spaces to accommodate this facility. And a nice part about this is, you know, we do have, if we need, after, you know, developing the site similar and going with the zoning requirements for parking, we, we have the flexibility to make it compliant to the zoning requirements here.
And you still own all of this land?
Yes, sir.
Right down to?
Yes. If we're not looking, we're, here at Gateway, all the way down Gateway, down to the bottom here, it comes over, up and over is this giant parcel.
Okay.
That's all them.
Okay.
So we have so much room, but they don't want to go far, but they have the ability to, to make it work for whatever we need to be. So phase one is to do this portion with the building, provide the parking as well as provide this accessory structure, which is basically a pole building to use for maintenance equipment for the facility.
Right.
Phase three, this is in the future now, as things develop, the proposed plan for the church is to provide a daycare facility. I believe you have one in town here, correct?
Yeah, we're running the current daycare facility out of the Buffalo Street.
Right, right. So future plans, as this whole thing develops and is in moving production, after that, some of the years and funding is, is developed, would be to mimic the same amount of square footage roughly here, match almost the design pretty much and add a daycare facility.
Well, that, that makes sense. That would be a new building.
Yes, sir. This portion down would be a new structure, similar in style and look as the existing property.
And the other one's new.
And as well, since this is new. So, but this will develop as it goes. So for some time being, this will still be undeveloped land.
Well, right now, you have a drive that goes down to this, this building, right? The name is suggesting right now.
Yes.
And actually goes past that.
It goes out, this, this is pretty much the extent of the existing parking that's already there. And there was a little, actually a service drive that's right there now.
Yeah, yeah.
That took you to the back of the doctor's office.
Right.
Which we are still maintaining all this.
Yes, I see that. I, I drove it.
Okay, as well as there's a, we won't call it a formal drive, it pretty much, I believe it's gravel, isn't it? It's a west.
Well, it's a hard surface, so.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a accessible drive.
Right.
So, which comes.
If I could just speak to this. When you look at the Hunt Medical Center, what was formerly the Ammon Heart and.
Sure.
There's not just the paved drive with egress and ingress from Lake, or Lake.
Gateway.
Gateway. There's also further up off of Gateway, as soon as you leave the corner, there is a gravel service road that was used as construction entrance that extends on the west front all the way up and beyond the property. If you recall, there's at least a dozen or more signs, welcome to Connie, home of the lions and this church and that church and the other. And that's the access to other properties that is built in and reinforced at, at least enough to take construction vehicles, just not paved.
Well, there again, so you're not landlocking the people. That's, that's what I go.
They've got my properties further north, that that would be the access to.
Access, yeah.
Is that right?
Well, they could, they'd probably come both ways, but I don't think they'd ever fit, but I'm, what I'm thinking, I'm not talking about a whole bunch of people, I'm talking about.
Ron, if you recall, when they were logging out there.
Yeah.
They used this road.
Right, I know.
It's parallel to Route 7.
Yeah, I know it is.
Okay, so that's their access back there, so there's no problem.
That can go all the way, it can be going back farther.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is it sufficient that at some later time, it was good for the purposes there, at some later time, if someone has that land back there and wants to do some kind of development, would that route provide an adequate access for a more improved road or would we need something else? Maybe that's not germane to your problem.
Right, and whether.
You understand what I'm asking?
See, what we're, we're saying is if somebody wants to develop that land that's behind you.
Right. Would they need something else or would that road maybe be expandable?
Now, I, forgive me if I don't remember seeing when I was coming up, are there other, along here, if someone wanted to develop land, there's also drives off of seven that other people have. If the person who owns this to the west could also cut a drive off of seven.
You can.
Okay, so there's only a dozen eight spots where the intersection, okay, so that's, I just, just throw that out here to see.
Well, as of right now, no, it's a big mess. We can't do any, we can't come off of Route 7.
It's a big, big procedure to get that.
Okay, that's, I'm just, just throwing that out there. Okay, but this drive is, is here, which works, yes, currently for those who are landlocked in a, the 10, owners of the property can still access from this gravel road.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Which also works well for the fire department's aspect of this. Because in situations, fire departments are very prone to, they want to have full access around the facility.
Exactly.
This helps us support that with them when they come to view this down the road, that they do have access to get around this structure in case of the, they're not stuck.
Well, that, and, and that too was, was my issue, but I mean, basically, you know, I wish that we were able to do something with the state in order to get access off of Route 7 and then he, there would be no issue.
So this is something above the city, to the state.
There again. You know, that's, it's been the issue for a long time and that's how, we had to go jump through hoops to get through gloves over there and get access off there.
So.
It's real pain.
Right, so this is pretty much in a nutshell what the church is planning on doing for this. Like this is, it is preliminary, we're, we're here to get your feedback as a council here while we were developing it. Our civil engineers are currently preparing all the required documentation that the city requires for this. That's currently in production right now, but it's more of, okay, here's what we're doing, so you got a better feel of this.
So we could get setbacks and everything, make sure we do comply?
We hit all the setbacks. I have, except I have one small area which would probably be an issue for zoning appeal. We do stick over the, for the zoning requirements, it's 50 foot setback, 20 foot sides, 50 foot rear.
Yeah.
At my rear, if, because Gateway is our front.
Yeah.
So 50, we got it. 20, got it, fine. However, the back parcels, three foot, eight inches structure sticks over.
So you just have to go with the zoning board of appeals and get a.
Correct, but I wanted to present that.
Get a variance.
Exactly, so we have.
And I don't think you're going to have a problem.
Correct, but we wanted to present that finding now that, hey, we're going to be going for variance for that small little bit as the structure.
Well, you see, that is our function, ingress, egress, setbacks, to make sure it fits.
Right.
And, and you know, we, I think there's not a person here that is wholeheartedly for this. I mean, we're, we're for this project.
And it's a very exciting project to be working on, seeing the structure.
Well, I'm glad to see something developed out there, you know.
You know, I would, if you make certain for your ease, is that a parking, go diagonal?
No.
Why? Well, you can actually, you control your flow of traffic and guys like me, it's easy to pull in it.
Yeah, I know it is, but you can, you can obtain more spaces. A diagonal parking space is, is a little bit wider and a little bit longer to accommodate the 12, 18 foot car, you know, and there's like, it eats up more of your parking configuration. Not to say it's out of the question, I mean, but we're trying to keep what was already the same configuration going on.
So how many, how many cars are you thinking you're going to have parking for, do you have an idea?
Well, based on, I mean, how we calculate occupancy code wise is different than what realistically they can expect in here. I mean, you, what do you think?
Well, first of all, we have, there's 79 spaces as it currently sits, we do nothing. However, the area immediately to the east of the current parking lot extending below where the current parking lot is, if you've been by there recently, you'll have seen that it's an area that's been cleared. We're pulling out all the tires that people have thrown back in there over the years and everything else.
I've seen, I've seen.
So that whole area is going to be turned into a gravelled parking lot area. We're going to do it as nicely as we can so that it looks good, but we're not going to go to the expense of paving it in phase one. But do you have a number on the parking?
Right now, the, the additional to the east is roughly 109 spaces.
So you add 79 and 109 and that's going to be phase one.
I think, I know you're going to be, that's not going to be a problem.
And that, well, your experience tells you that's, that's adequate, you think, for your gatherings at the present.
Correct.
You feel that's more, that's more parking than anybody we have in the city.
Well, yeah, but.
Right.
But you're, you're looking for.
Our project leader on this is Bill Wiley and I, he probably ought to say something at this point because he's heading up our, I, I'm just the pastor, so.
Yeah, but you're doing okay.
But this is venue set up for, for maybe an occasional large performance. And, and what we're looking at right now is that, that we're not going to have the, the additional parking for that. But what we would do is if you had this one time event or, or whatever, we would shuttle them from maybe over at the plaza, get some permission to park cars over there, maybe And what we're looking at right now is that we're not gonna have the additional parking for that. But what we would do is if you had this one-time event or whatever, we would shuttle them from maybe over at the plaza, get some permission to park cars over there, maybe over at the school, and that would allow us just for that one event. So we had kind of thought through how we would handle, you know, those kind of things. The idea behind this whole concept is, when four churches came together and started talking about this, we wanted to do something not only for church and bring people to Christ, but we also wanted to do something for the community. So so that everybody knows, this isn't just a church. It's gonna be utilized for the community, we're gonna put on things for the community for children, for people who are gonna use it. It's not that you can't use it, so we want it used as much as possible. And the back part of this, going back to your ingress and egress, it really behooves us to allow them to expand back there. The more people are back there, the more we want it to come to us. Not that we want it to come to our church, we want it to become to Christ, okay? It's not just church, it's just, we all share that same process on church.
Well, and that's great, but you know, and we don't have a problem. I just, you know, I just wanna make sure that we cover our bases with our situation here. And that's basically ingress, egress, parking, setbacks. Now, these setbacks, the one that you're gonna have to go zoning board of appeal, we'll approve it here on a contingent that you go to the zoning board of appeals and get that rectified, okay? And, and the other, the other issue is that we not landlock the people. That's all I wanna make clear, is that we not landlock the other property owners. See, the state really didn't do us a favor when they put Route Seven in there, they landlocked them people. They cut their land in half and put that Route Seven through there. So there's people that live on Center Road that have parcels over across Route Seven. So when Gateway came in there, they gave them an access route, and you say Dormant Road, well, I didn't know whether there was access back there or not, could be somebody's property, they don't want nobody on there. So you see, what I have to make sure is, they have some way to get back to their property without somebody saying you're trespassing. And I would think that a church wouldn't do that anyways, but-
Now, do we need something on, in writing, something on a plan, something that's filed for this?
Well, I, you know, we, when you go, this is preliminary, and when it gets, becomes factual, that stuff will have to be addressed. And we have, I know, I just wanna let you know now, so there's no surprises when you come to us with a final plan and you want us to approve it. And certainly, we're gonna do that if you follow these rules, I don't know why we wouldn't, you know?
The minutes of our meeting, not that if we make that motion, conditional motion, and it be approved, that'll be your preliminary approval, I think is what Ron's trying to say.
Yeah.
On the final thing, more formally.
And just so you know too, if you go out to look on this parking thing, where the future daycare goes is gonna be initially a parking lot. We've already pretty much got it started and we're working on that right now.
Well, I see that you got work on it, I see, I was out there and drove it, and Ms. Gates was there too, so, I mean, we looked at this, it's not like we don't know what we're looking at. But, you know, when you tell us this stuff, and we're taking your word for it right now, until we get, you know, solid concrete plans, but I'm just, I'm just making you aware of what we expect.
Right, that's the whole intention of this.
Right, exactly.
Is pick your brain, so we know that we're all proceeding in the correct direction, and that no one's caught off guard in that submission.
That, to me, is the main issues we have, unless somebody else has an issue, is there anybody here that has an issue? Okay.
Well, if you want me to, I could show you just briefly some of the renders, that will kind of give you the idea of how the structure's gonna look. It's like I said, it's a tensile fabric structure. And basically, it looks like a tent, however, it's a little bit more sophisticated than that. One of the neat things about this thing is it's a two-layer fabric system. And how this works is there's an internal aluminum frame system that works off the same concept as a mast on a sailboat.
Sort of like a silver dome?
Basically, and sandwiched between there is roughly about nine inches of pure insulation. Gives you awesome insulation value for retaining, better than a lot most buildings do. It gives you the great openness that a structure can provide for you. So you're gonna see this nice large structure identifying this assembly area. And if you want, I can pass these over, just so people can see these. And it kind of shows you how Phase One's gonna look. This is Route Seven back here, here's our existing doctor's office, and here's the new sprung structure that's going in place.
And that would be a permanent factor there, that will be the factor.
This is your assembly area.
Okay, it'll be a permanent structure.
Yeah, it'll be a permanent structure, okay. One of the neat things about it is we've done some, you know, the pastor's done a lot of research on this as well, and there's other facilities around northeast Ohio, P.A., right? Where this structure is built. And kind of gives, I can give you a sense by looking at some of these pictures of how the inside of this facility really can look. Now, this is an existing church, same type of construction. And it showed you the openness and the volume that's created within this space.
Well, the technology we have today with this stuff is really amazing. But I, you know what I really like, if you get that area looking like this, it's gonna be beautiful. I mean, you're gonna, we're gonna have green space here and trees, that'd be great.
It's a really neat, fascinating facility, it's like they mentioned, it's not just a place of worship, it's a place of gathering and social interaction for any events, musical, theater, it could be anything. And it's a great way to pull the community together, is having a place to do this kind of event. So I'm really excited to be working on this with the pastor, and like we said, we're in the development stage. There's now the civil package, and when the package is done, we'll be formally semantic council here to formally go through the process of reviewing it and the BZA, doing all of that, so.
Should I ask you a question? Sort of in germane. A couple minutes ago, you were there and you said, and this, Phase Three. Whether that was a slip of the tongue, or that was supposed to be Phase Two.
Yeah.
If that was Phase Three, what was Phase Two?
Oh, I'm sorry, let's go.
I thought it was Phase Two.
Phase Two.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I thought it-
I'm looking, is the building parking, parking, going on active?
Just wanna make sure it's parked.
Phase Two of the building is a daycare.
Okay, fine.
Phase One is the-
That's what I thought, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Well, hey, I'll tell you what, I've seen, oh, I need to make a decision, I don't know. I would like to make a motion that we accept this, providing all the provisions that we had just mentioned, and as a preliminary plan.
With a conditional on the-
Yeah, well, they have to go to the zoning board of appeals, which we don't control, so. Does anyone have a second on, second by Mr. Sednak? All those in favor? All right, okay, you have it. And you know what I say, welcome, welcome, I'm sure, as the project goes along.
You're underway already as far as-
You have it if you want.
You're already clearing land.
What's your timetable?
Nope.
Come in, Jeff, go ahead.
Well, we're right now, we've got some issues yet, as always, with financing and so forth. But if we can get everything together, our timetable is to have this up by winter, by Christmas, and then point it from there, but probably more, sort of be, that's our hope, but it's probably gonna be more like that.
Sure, one, one other thing, and it's not pertinent to this project really, is what would you do with your other building?
What about it?
Your building that you're in now.
Right now, it's gonna continually be used as a daycare. And at the present, downtown, the Friday night dinners and so forth, services will be moved out there.
The sanctuary.
Hopefully, we sell that, I believe.
So you're still gonna maintain the building, and you're not gonna leave it?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's my idea.
We'll be a two-campus church until it sells.
Okay.
And we'll continue doing ministry there and worship at the new place. And I know when I shared with you folks a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, we are still, as we get into the Phase Three portion, hoping to have either YMCA or Boys and Girls Clubs of America, that type of a thing be a part of that next phase. I mean, we're still hoping for that, but the reality of money and the lack of money tree in the area has kept us where we have to do it a step at a time and just work towards the great hopes that we have.
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, I studied that when the Raw School was over there, we were talking about YMCA maybe coming in here and maybe do using that building, and that's a big ordeal. That's a tough situation, so if you can do any, accomplish anything like that, it would be great. It'd be somebody else has some time, they haven't, nobody's done it yet, so. What I would say is, that'd be great, and it's a great ministry. I mean, I can see already, I noticed my neighborhood's full of cars on Sunday. So, okay, thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
No business? Okay, um-
Is there anything on Dollar General? Dollar General-
Okay, yeah, that's a good one.
Dollar General State Street has submitted an application for demolition of the buildings, and they've also sent me a check for the cost of their zoning permit for the building.
So they already transferred their properties then?
I don't know that for sure.
I saw the one on Gore Road, that was transferred.
Okay, I haven't been able to watch that.
From what I understand, is they've got, they've got an option on that property, until everything is approved by the city, they won't, they won't exercise that option.
What's that, Dollar General downtown?
Yeah, the one downtown.
Nothing's doing it then?
Yes, yes, they've got their approval for their-
They gave me a demolition packet yesterday, but I haven't had the chance to go through it.
Okay.
So, it's not a death wait.
Oh, okay, and Gore Road is? Gore Road is, they've already applied and they're, I think they've been approved.
Just in clear-
Yeah, they have their zoning permit and they're waiting for ground to break.
Once they break ground, seventy days, that'll be up and running.
Yeah.
So, you know, and I would hope that they do the same thing with the downtown area one, because there'll be, what, about five buildings there that'll be coming down.
Five buildings gotta be down, yeah, nothing started on that.
Well, once they start on that, once they start on that, that won't take them long.
That's right, as evidence like up on Main Street.
We've had some, some houses come down that you have, I don't know, we have, what, twenty-two or twenty-four of them down in the city, and once we get approval, but it's a slow process. She's gotta jump through hoops to get that thing, to try and get some of them removed.
Yeah.
And we desperately need it, but, you know, we need to work on, one of these times, we need to work on that part of the master plan where it says that if you take existing, existing-
Property.
Properties and be able to rebuild on them.
Rebuild, inbuilt, yeah, we wanna build, inbuilt.
Well, there's a section in the, in the master plan for that.
Yeah, and we need, but it needs to be incorporated into zoning or something, so we can do it.
We need to get that part to council and get them to approve that.
That's a good check. Yeah.
And that's to be done.
I won't bring it up again.
Easy, easy done.
Well, I'm sure council will oblige.
Yeah, true.
Uh, we're gonna have to work with that, you know, we need to get some of these things actuated, or we need to scrap the plan.
We make a new council.
We spent forty thousand dollars, well, we've been through a couple of councils, three, four of them. And all I can tell you is the city of Coniat and the citizens here spent forty thousand dollars for a master plan, and we haven't had anything accomplished yet, and I'm a little disturbed about that. We need to work on some things that don't cost us a lot of money, all it is, is legis, legislation, and we need to legislate. And we need to do that.
Well, now we're thinking about it, so I've got somebody thinking about it, now we just get the council moving and-
Well, I'm sure they'll move, they just need a little push some time, that's all.
A good push, yeah, well.
Okay, is there any other business?
Lake Rose progressing?
Huh?
Oh, yes, I'm just waiting, any day now, I expect, expecting their plans.
Okay, I think they're waiting for spring, and it looks like they've probably put up a model somewhere along the line, doesn't it?
Put up a what?
A model.
Oh, you're talking about Vinnie Rose?
Yeah, Vinnie Rose, I thought that's what you were talking about.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, I would expect any time now, as long as they're totally approved. Are they totally approved, ready to go?
No, we're waiting on drawings, elevated drawings.
Elevated drawings.
Okay.
Okay, but otherwise, council's already passed this, and we've passed it, so it's just preliminary stuff. Red tape, stuff that we gotta get through.
Yeah, I think they can go ahead.
I think that, you know, they wanna get going as soon as possible, I mean, the weather's now favorable for them.
I think they've done enough clearing, I think they're gonna put a model house on the corner there and start-
Well, they've already got a couple, he said he's got three sold.
Yeah, I thought he'd say-
So I wouldn't be surprised if they started with three models.
If they got enough sold, people ask you, you know, how's he gonna build all those houses and not? I say, he's not gonna build them until he's got some orders, but he's gonna build a model.
Well, once he, once it starts, it'll, it'll just, it's steamrolling.
It should be moving.
It's just like, just like west winds, you know, everybody said that wasn't gonna go, that's full. And so is the Spring Street apartments, that wasn't supposed to be able to go either, but it's full.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean-
Because it was a good deal.
It's almost like that Field of Dreams, if you build it, they'll come, you know what I mean?
Had to fight to do those, you know? Spring Street and-
I think, I think that we will-
We're getting there.
Yes, I'm happy to see that, I see we got some progress. So that's all we can do for now, and I appreciate all of you.